Good evening, everyone, and I'd like you for coming. My name is Leigh Williamson. I'm the head of a group called Higgins Seniors for Change. And tonight, we will be discussing tax plans, and what we can legally do and not do. I have two school board members here. This is Daniel Bell. He's the head of the school board. He's the chairman. And Catherine White's back there, somewhere getting paperwork. These are our two guests tonight. I was born and housed Senator Payne from Senator DeBees. They had confirmed that they would be here tonight. But I got an email this afternoon from Senator Payne. He said that the county was calling for a special exemption to that plan, and he couldn't attend. Now, you may not hear it from Senator DeBees, but I'm sure if Senator Payne has to be there, Senator DeBees has to be here. What? Can you hear that? Yeah. Oh, right. I believe you speak up, I guess. The first thing I was going to tell Senator DeBees, if he was here, was step us through the process of creating a tax exemption plan to get it signed by the governor into law. Now, I know a little bit about it, but I don't know a whole lot about it. This is Catherine. This is Catherine Martin. She's a member of the school board. And I appreciate them coming. I invited all three commissioners, all school board members, senators, and representatives of great tax groups. I have not heard of great tax groups, so I don't know what's going on with them. Oh, is that sarcasm? Oh, yes. He did not answer my emails in my first day after having a label six, but things didn't work out. And if he emailed and told me that his wife was complex and he would attend the funeral on label six, well, then I changed the date to April 10, and I didn't hear anything back from him. And none of the great commissioners, so I don't want to put one on the email. I think they're writing places. They don't like me, Daniel Bell, and are vocal, and they don't like what I'm doing. But that's okay, in my mind, in this right thing. Now, the school board here, Daniel and Catherine, will answer questions, if you've got questions of them, when it comes to that part of our meeting. Some of you are aware that the current property tax exemption for senior homeowners is has a living of $25,000 less than, and it has no COLA built in. A COLA is a cost of living adjustment, which the cost of living every year goes up. For some reason, back in 1977, they passed this, they would not build in a COLA. And that includes every one of your household. If the homeowner and his spouse are carrying for a load in capacity in some way, and let him get money, make a disability or social security for their owner, the county counts that income also. To me, that's just wrong. It should be just the homeowner and his spouse, people that own the home. That's wrong. That, I want to change that. Another problem with the exemption, it counts gross income, not net income. We live off of net income. We don't live off gross income. That's no thing that's wrong with it. If you get a raise in your social security and you are planning the $25,000 to get the exemption, and your social security may not go up to $25,000, $25, you're not eligible for it. All the counties around here that has some form of meaningful tax exemption does not count your social security or your pensions. If you look at any of their offices, I have a copy. I have a copy for all of their tax exemption plans, and they do not count social security and their pensions, but they count anything else. You've got a four over K, and you draw out of it. That counted as income, but they have a higher one. Like, there's a higher than $25,000. Okay, let's start going over some of these things. Now, I have a great tax plan here, A, B, and C. This paper that says tax exemption plan is abbreviated, that's the council-wide version of the tax plan. And the first one says, shall act bill through with the revised home state enforcement from Higgins County School District at lower taxes for educational purposes, or the full value of homestead up to 10 acres for five years for residents of that school district for 65 years and make part of the sale. Now, Plan... What's Plan A? Okay, that's Plan A.
Leigh, if you speak up or try something.
This is Plan A. I'm sure, hard to pronounce. Plan A is where... Now, this one probably wouldn't have passed, commissioner, because of the law. I just threw that in to get to a little bit of knowledge of what's going on with some of the other tax plans. Now, this one is beyond the county. I just threw in the words Higgins County. But the five years... I need to step back on this. I have sat down and talked with Mr. Jones about an hour about this. He offered suggestions, I offered suggestions, and some of these things is what was come up that I put down here. He is in favor of what's called a sunset clause. A sunset clause lets the tax exemption plan be in place for five years. Study's done, so that it takes about five years to show the impact what an exemption plan can do to the school board. It takes that long. There's going to be an impact, obviously, to the school budget, to the school board, and the money they come up with, and all those other things. But a sunset clause counts it all for five years. At the end of five years, if the school budget has been unaffected or has been disabled terribly, the county can go back in and rewrite the clause in there that says, and makes some changes, in other words. Now, they can't take away the tax exemption. They can make some changes. Now, commissioners are in favor of putting that in their tax exemption plan. Five years. We still got our tax exemption plan to end in five years, because they'll have to go in the way adjustments. Instead of 10 acres, let's change it to five acres. Instead of 65, they're not going to ask for sale. But that's what the first one is about. You get total student tax exemption for anything up to 10 acres for five years, it'll be over 65. And I put disabled in there because the term disabled is associated with the threat of tax exemption. And if I say, we're going to pass this tax exemption and put it on the ballot, and I don't include disabled in there, it will get rid of the tax exemption with the disabled that is there currently, and it's $25,000, too. It's the same as the $25,000 for 65. Oh, it's the same. So, since the disabled is attached to the current one, I have to put disabled in there. And the thing right here, this is the legal plan. This is what will go to Congress, towards the Congress, to be passed, read and passed. That's why I put it in the council-wide first. This is the long, five, six-page tax exemption plan. You can read that at your leisure. Oh, no, some of these things are done, but don't worry, it's just right, it'll give the key back to you. Okay, the next one. Tax Plan D. This is amending the current tax exemption. What I'm doing is I'm also asserting the five-year clause, sunset clause, for 65. Oh, but I'm increasing it from $25,000 to $40,000, and to exclude social security income and retirement income, and change the income limitation to read from gross income to net income, and change the income requirements for an entire household to income of homeowner and spouse who resides and occupy the homestead. And this also asserts the clause to provide for annual cost of living adjustments. The next Plan C. This one is a little bit different, and this is something that walks along time. Come on with it. This one actually... Well, let me play story about Rob. Now, Rob, when we were, when we first started, two years ago, he was totally easy. Well, I kept giving data, kept giving information, kept shoving the paperwork in. And finally, he decided to do some research on his own. The last time I talked with him last month, we sat down and had him discuss about this , going out, and he, I'll get it, he said, well, he says, after doing my own research, which he basically followed the county, the county, and talked to the test patient about himself, and did some in-depth research on the paperwork. He says he's behind this thing. He says, I don't know your side. So, that's the great step forward from being, I told him, yes, you too long with your side. So, I'm going to be up here, and the other two, because of this tax plan, and we're going to vote on one of those times, so he doesn't know what he planned, what he wants. Okay, the next tax plan is sort of a percentage plan. Again, it's got a sunset clause in it. Five years, and wholesale up by acres. And beginning at age 65, you get a 50% reduction in school taxes. And at age 70, you get a 100% relaxation of taxes. And the Act also provides for disabled and refills the current one of less than $25,000 gross income. Those are my tax plans. Your other paperwork I had included here, if you look at some of these, the law, I guess you, has anybody seen my sign, the signature? You got a copy of the signature? Well, one of these points, you have, like, if you won't get your signatures, that's good. The law, if you look at the copy of the law, according to the Constitution, Article 8, Subsection 2, Paragraph 1. Then bottom, in Section, Paragraph 1, Mark II. Amendments to or appeals of such low tax ordinances, resolutions, or regulations adopted pursuant to Paragraph and Subparagraph A. Hereof, they be initiated by a petition filed with Judge of the Pro-Act Court. In our case, would be with the elected, the Board of Elections, or so. They want the Pro-Act Court to deal with the election. The Pro-Act Court of the county contained, in cases of counties with a population of 5,000 or less, the signatures of at least 25% of elected voters registered to vote in the last general election. In cases of counties with a population of more than 5,000, but not more than 50,000, at least 20% of elected voters registered to vote in the last general election. That's where I need the law to fit it all. We have, oh, I forgot. I'm having a senior moment here. Anyway, I need maybe 4,040 signatures. I think, let's see. Oh, yeah, there are approximately 20,200 registered voters difference. So, if we can get 20,000, or 20% of registered voters sign a petition, then we ourselves, registered voters, can get a petition on the ballot. So, that plan behooves the government authority of this county to work with us. Because if we go that far, if it goes so far that we have to get it on the ballot itself, I'll ask for mass, if you plan that. 10 acres, total exemption for anybody getting by the older, those sunset laws.
Wait.
Yeah.
How many signatures do you have right now?
Well, I have about 5,000 signatures without the signature, and I have another, I guess, 900, just an actual signature. So, if we come to the point that we have to get the signature that I can't get, the commissioners to work with us, I'm going to have to ask everybody that's in it, petition, which I've got posted up here. This is just, this is just to mine. Everybody that's sent you, everybody that's in here sometimes, just find me, send me a review. That's why I gave you a copy of that. And if you don't get your signature, just say it, so we get the email that says, oh, yeah, I need your signature to sign it, I need it.
Can I ask you a question about...
Sure. This is y'all's meeting. Anybody that's got questions, or anybody that's got a comment to make, have it.
Talking about signatures on the internet, that is not possible.
I'm sorry?
To get signatures on the internet, that is not possible.
It has to be an actual signature on the sheet. And they just go to the Board of Elections, and they will check those signatures against the registered voters listed. And really, they need to get more than the required, because you can't let girls have a certificate, put it out, it doesn't count. So, we need to have a little more. The next sheet y'all want to talk about is the Georgia Code. Constitution has laid for the taxation and finance exemption from ad hoc tax provision. Exemption was made on prior global, the government authority of any county, party, municipality, subject to approval of majority of all five electors of such political subjectivity voting in a referendum in care on, may exempt from ad hoc taxation, including all such taxation limits for educational purposes and challenges in this county, included in the process of bound back for justice and in the work. Of that saying, the government authority of this county, which to me is commissioners and our great experts, has the power to go in and submit a tax exemption plan for the seniors if they were to. Now, Rob Jones, he's kind of confused on the government authority part. He says, he says this is left up to the school board. Great expert says this is up to the school board, and the next time I ask him, he says this is up to the commissioners. Now, Daniel Bell, the chairman, and the school board, has already announced publicly that they are not the building authority of this county, and they will not sue me or deny only a tax exemption plan, but I would like their approval. They're going to have to deal with an aftermath and a reduction in income for the school board, but I don't approve. The assessment of property in this county is so unequal and unbelievable. First, they start, you pay less taxes, and you got less money. They got more than one. People lost land, and they very little in taxes. One way to offset the law from revenue for the school board, one, they don't have to regulate it at this point, people. But they might not have to regulate it once, it doesn't have to. Ew, we get a re-assessment of all the property in this county done, and we have not had this done since the year 2000. And the property values, the assessment is crazy. Even from my own personal experience, this is why I was told. I'm online, and I have to get my latest taxes. How much do I pay again? You could do this, my friend. I just go on my website, on the homepage, got all the website, and need to check on everything, and everything's fine. We have our secrets in this county. What the, right off, the tax board just kept going up, that's my story there, kept going up on my stats. I was like, how did it go, dear? How can you keep going up? And then I got online. So, I was told, I have to do it. So, I checked my acres. They're out. One of my neighbors has five acres. His land, his five acres, is taxed, assessed at the same as my little old one. Now, I pillowed last year, put footboards, where dogs, that's good. And they told me this. In some divisions, there's going to be a deep, unbuildable land. Because, I mean, no matter, there's going to be a lot of land, and it's, it's, it crops down high. You know, you fall, you grow forever. So, the land is unbuildable. Since they are not receiving tax money on their land, they assess somebody, most one acre, say, is what I go by, or three acres, I know that they're all three acres, is assessed as not an acre. And that's how they recoup their losses. And that's not our right to pillow it, and this is what they explained to me. Land is even unowned, and there's no tax money coming in on this land, because it's unbuildable, so they got to recoup it. And large landowners, you're kind of a tax company, you call it, I don't have a hand in taxes, some of these large landowners, and the community, the conversation, and some of the guys, it's a tax burden. It works out, I checked on one, and about $10, $0.1 cents an acre for doing that. I mean, how much do you pay per acre doing that? Really? Now, so those who are the easiest places, if they want to help, now, oh, we've, we grew our dogs on this tax assessment thing. And basically, what it boils down to, he does just enough to satisfy the state department. And they don't want to put out money to do a rest of the all property. Yeah, they're going to have to eventually. I mean, 17 years, you've got enough property that is a tank. And if y'all want to go in and look at other neighbors, or some of the other people in this county who's questionable, you can go on my website, on my homepage, it's got every website you need to do your own research. If you want to get angry, access those websites. That spurred me on. And I feel a lot of information from y'all, people like y'all. They email me, hey, you need to take a look at it. Or they'll ask me something, or I can put it in an attachment. And I've spoken, I've researched, and that helped me a lot, too. A lot of some of my research, I've gained so much knowledge over the last few years in regard to taxes. It's amazing, and the, what's going on in this county, political, politic-wise, I don't want to go there, but I've learned a lot about taxes. I've been, I went to each of the surrounding counties, called for a tax commissioner. Got invited to man up, obvious of their tax plans, and that's how I come upon this government authority. So, in my town, there's all that, or all the school boards, all the commissioners, and so, nothing gets done. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. What is the millage cap for school taxes? I noticed that this is 15.9 something?
Yeah.
That's what Higgins County's at now? What is the cap?
Yes, yes.
What is the cap?
He says it's about 20.
About 20, so your five-year, if the school board wants to have the same budget as they had the year before, when you institute this, they simply may raise their millage. I can't imagine that a third of more millage would not take care of the seniors. You understand what I'm saying? In order to generate the same funds, all they got to do is raise the millage. You're going to lose taxable value on the digest, but you raise your millage, you come out to the same place. So, your five-year plan, so to see what the effect is, is not, is non-secular.
That's the way we figured it out. Oh, Daniel, let's put that to college, and put it on. We have come up with a figure around shortage, if every senior homeowner signs up for this, a shortage of $6 billion. And there will be some people that don't sign up, or there will be some people who will go, yeah, we can go for it.
So, in other words, what you're saying is, even if they went with a 20-millage cap, they wouldn't be able to generate the same amount of funds?
Yes, they would. They can raise it about one mill.
Oh, one mill would do it?
And do a rest assessment of property. That right there, when they go for, do a rest assessment of property, when they go for the law revenue.
Second question, you referred to homestead property, and then you referred to homeowner. Homesteaded property is that property that's owned by a resident of Higgins County?
And homesteaded property is the spouse, owner is living in. Homestead and homeowner, hmm, probably about the same. They call it homestead exemption at the tax office, so if you go in and file for homestead exemption, one time, when you first moved here, it's a little bit of money off your shares, which is not much.
So, what if a person that has a home here, lives in it six months out of the year, but is a resident of another state?
He wouldn't be eligible.
Would not be eligible.
Wouldn't be eligible. You got to, that'd be your main residence.
That's what I want to find out.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry. If you got a question, stand up so we can see, and hear you better.
How many, how many seniors are in this county?
The county has 20.9% of our population of 30,000, but not all of that 20% own homes.
Could you add a number of the, the value of the homes that are owned by seniors?
Well, yes, I actually, the average homeownership. That's averaging out all of them.
Is that, is that for seniors, or for...
This is for everybody in the county. That includes the, and three of you, all the families of business.
So, how many, what percentage, you've got 20.9% seniors, what percent of seniors own their homes?
That, you have no way to own. That could be done. I could get four dogs to do it, through the wood.
I don't think he has it in Simons.
That's true, so true. He told me the other night that they don't have people to do this, these complicated tax plans, and that I needed to keep it simple.
Well, when you're talking to somebody that's really simple, I guess you need to.
Oh, you're so. The way you're talking, I'm like, look at mine. You're putting your employees down. You're saying your employees out there don't know what it means, that they're dumb, keep it simple, they're not intelligent enough to use these percentages and figure out taxes. Go ahead.
I have a question for you. Who determines, or who would be the determining factor on the sunset clause, you said it for five years, that the school, per se, may or may not be losing money? Who makes that decision?
It'll reincorporate it to the tax plan, and go up for the government for a signature. And at the end of that five years, the commissioners will have to come up with something else if we're not getting the money back.
I guess what I'm saying, or what I'm thinking, is what's to say that they don't claim that we're losing so much money that we've got to go back to the other...
Oh, there's an easy way to check this out.
I know that, but we're dealing with Jones now.
Well, thank you. Now, good Jones, this Jones not be running in the legislature today, he's completely right, he's in the...
Really? Is it Higgins County, is it Dade, and Child County because of the communities, Big Canoe, and Bent Tree? As I understand it, when I moved here 16 years ago, and voluntarily worked over at the high school, I was kind of told that we are in a common location that does not get the allocation of government funding for schools, as other schools do in Georgia. Is that true of Higgins County?
Yes, ma'am. Higgins County is considered a Tier Four, with its magistrate county. Yeah, I'll figure, I'll get that here, with all the... With all the, uh, former people who live in the highest living, they jack it up to eighty-five thousand, average income.
Is there a chance that we could ever give these state legislators to do something about that? And change that, you know, that designation for this county? Because that is so out of.
It is, that way, I agree.
It gets painful to walk drive through this county and see the poverty that exists. I've got half the kids going to the schools on breakfasts and free lunches here. So I mean, something needs to be changed about that. I think the school board ought to be responsible.
It's very like what you do down there.
Oh, that's not decided by the state.
That's decided by the state, actually. And, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that they go with a census. If you put your income down in the census, don't do it. That's one way to get up a change, to start a change. It's to leave our town on our, I got a, a low income, I'm something. They, they use that against us. Uh, the census is not used for us, it's used against us. So that would be one way to, uh, to change that census, to kind of allow, leave it on line. Where it's put something down, I wasn't the actual, I don't know. But actually, to me, this county is, this is a poor county.
Do you feel that we have a better chance of getting something passed with the five years?
Yes, yes.
But now, with, with all the work that I know you've done, and how many other people, do we wanna have to go through all that again in five years?
Well, we wouldn't go through the whole thing. Now, we can, it would have to be put through the, through Congress. The change would have to be put on the ballot, and we would have to vote for it. We can always vote in, and we don't want, they'd have to vote something out. But we can have to vote on it. They don't, apparently, get the chance to do it themselves. That'd have to be gone through, just, just like these legal companies that are giving you, uh, tax plans, something like that would have to be put through the, through Congress. And it'd have to be passed and signed up, and then it would have to go on the ballot. Go ahead.
Got a question.
Go ahead, Richard, stand up.
What about that new school they wanna build? To replace the middle school? In the next five years, we're gonna be getting a new school supposedly. And that will affect your sunset law, or whatever. They're gonna say, oh, by the way, we need another twelve million dollars, so we're not gonna, uh, renew your, uh, thing, 'cause we gotta do a new school. Unless, unless they put out a bond issue. And then that's gonna be a whole nother subject.
Well, right now, there's that East Bloss, we get a sales tax in place there. You got any comments, make them my name?
In regards, in regards to that, the East Bloss that passed, the middle school, that's what it was passed for. So that, that doesn't have anything to do with your property taxes, or anything you're discussing here tonight, has nothing to do with the, the East Bloss, the middle school. The, the East Bloss, those monies can only be used for certain things. Technology, school buses, uh, you know, anything transportation type related, and then our facilities. That's what that has done.
So what you're saying is the new school is paid for?
No, the school, the new school is not paid for. So in, in January, the taxes would, would, the, the new East Bloss was, the collection started. And, but we have not started the facilities. So we're collecting dollars right now, that if, when it gets started, those dollars would be applied to this school.
But the school tax has been gone down. The revenue supposedly in the paper since the tax, the taxes that have been collected for that particular entity are not, are going actually down, because people are going other places to buy things.
The dollars were?
The dollars were the E-tax.
Yeah, well, the one, the current one started in paper.
Correct.
And the, the last one that finished up in December was a, was a little over twenty million dollars, is what the collection was for that five-year span. So, projection, you know, would be, the next five years would collect twenty million dollars.
And that would be another payment school?
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of, you can get money versus, building a new school versus, uh, you know, trying to rebuild on an existing school. There's money you get from the state. And, and it's a formula, like everything, we talk about, here's a formula. Uh, so you would get more money from the state on a new facility than you would try to have money, especially once a school gets as old as the, the school that we are looking at replacing. It basically, you'd never get any more money from the state, because they know it's a money pit at that point. So it, it would, it's more beneficial to build a new school versus trying to rebuild one that's already sixty years old. Yeah.
I heard they were gonna build two middle schools. Out of the west county of Pickens, and one that they wanted to build. That's what I had heard, too. And I thought that was a little bit.
Well, you were talking to they, I don't know who they is.
Well, that was a meeting that your newest school board member was introducing herself to, and there were a number of people that went to that meeting within the last year, when she was getting elected, and, uh, or trying to run for election as a new school board member. And we were talking amongst the crowd that they wanted two schools, two middle schools.
No, we currently have two schools. I believe some of the, the things have been said is, do we want to combine the one or keep two? I'm in favor of having two, we already currently have two.
What about that combination of that school? You can build on that school that's out there now, across from the farm. And I thought that was one of the smartest things I've read in the paper that you were thinking about planning on doing, was adding to that and building more in that.
There is room in that facility, and, uh, and I didn't bring that information here, but I'll tell what, well, I don't know. There is room for there. And that was a conversation, would it be more financially feasible to, you know, put an entire one middle school instead of two on that area? Looking at the numbers of kids there, uh, and, and we have not, we have, because we're going through, we just went through a high school principal search, we're going through a super kid search now. The, the middle school has sort of taken a, a backseat at this moment, as far as discussion. We did speak to both middle schools, their, their school advisory councils there, just to get an idea of what they thought, because they had kids currently in their school. So we got some ideas as far as the building, and, and these are all options at this point that are being looked at. Uh, you know, maybe rearranging some of the, the groups of kids in certain schools. Probably have two middle schools, would it be better? And I could talk a long time about the benefits of putting all your kids in one school as far as like grade levels. Maybe having a new school that's a field six grade school, and then using the existing Pickens County Middle School as a seventh and eighth. Because what we, what, some of the problems we're running into is, because of the funding, and a lot of what we talk about here, and, and the ones you were talking about, the funding, it's a formula, and, and the schools are constantly looking at this formula, trying to, I don't wanna say manipulate it, but it is what it is. Trying to position kids where they need to be and get more money, you know? So it's, it's a, it's a puzzle, is what it is. It's very, it's, it's very complicated. But when we put, if we had all of our eighth graders in one school, we could offer them more classes that maybe they get credit in high school while they're still in middle school. So there are some things, and we have not, these are just strictly options and things that have been brought to our attention. We are going to, uh, in the, in the future, uh, you know, have discussions and get ideas and let people know where we are and why we are making decisions, and, and how that will take place. But we will not, we couldn't fund two middle schools. I mean, the one, the twenty million dollars, you know, based on us, the money that we collect in East Bloss versus somebody like Dawson County, they, they collect almost double the East Bloss money. So they wouldn't be near as, as pressed as we would.
It's our school enrollment here, because I see so many schools that look like they own that one.
Um, it's like I gave off.
We have forty-four, basically forty-four hundred, forty-four hundred students.
Forty-four students.
Say that again.
What is the projection to increase your figure?
Well, we, uh, there is not an official projection, but about ten years ago, there was a, a jump in, in enrollment, and it was just, it, that came in. Basically, came in as kindergartners, and then they have worked their way through the system. And, and each year, when that larger group of kids would move up, it would affect how you had to, you know, you had, have to ask teachers or do something. But over the past, uh, seven, eight years, it didn't, I won't say it's completely flatlined, because it does get a little up and down a little bit. But we have not seen, uh, even up till now, there has not been a large increase in enrollment. It's pretty much stayed the same.
Anybody got any more questions for Daniel?
Questions, nothing, I got one. To your proposed plans, A, B, and C? On plan A, it limits at homestead of ten acres or less. Plan B, uh, doesn't refer to an acreage limit, and plan C refers to a five acre limit. I'm sure someone who's in here had an acre or over ten. I wanna know why these.
Plan B is just revising the present tax intention of twenty-five thousand. All I'm doing is changing the warrant and increasing it to forty thousand. That's why I didn't, I'm not changing anything else. The present tax plan is just increasing it from twenty-five thousand gross income, forty thousand net income, and excluding social security and retirement income. That's why.
What about the acres? I didn't understand.
It doesn't say anything. The present one does not say anything about acres. It just said age, age income, it doesn't say anything about the present.
I still don't understand. Plan A says if you had over ten acres, you probably wouldn't apply for a, a sentence on plan A.
Yeah, right. This is plan A, but my everything didn't want to wash. I've talked to Mr. Jones about this, and the total extension, I probably would wash. I just, they didn't know how to say it, so that's what we're on hand. This is what we're on hand on plan A. So if you got over five acres, I don't think it helps. Well, can't all, I mean, none of these would help me. But there, no, there is, I'm trying to, once, help people who really need help. I hear so much from people, like, I've got it. Got my petitions tagged here, calling people, I didn't follow their petition. And it's breaking my heart. And I'm trying to help people who really need it.
Well, we need it. I bought our land when we were working, now we're not, working for taxes.
Well, one of these is gonna go on the ballot. So it could be, it's plan A. Is court of law, you all close, yes? Yes, sir.
And if plan B is to amend existing tax, would it be easier to get that done than it is to start with a whole new act?
Uh, in my opinion, I would say so. This is one, I would hope with Mr. Jones, essentially, and for dogs on this, plan B. Uh, what I think that would wash, uh, plan C could. Before I get along with my special guest, Senator Steve Goodt here. He represents the, a certain part of our county. Right? Senator's name, told me to not wait until tonight, he had a visit, it's all for him. There's questions I need to answer. Where's my lead? Senator Goodt, would you step us through the process of a tax intention plan on creation? To get it on ballot, and governor, governor signing? Would you do as they set up itself?
Good to see all of y'all. Got good news for you. The general assembly is out of session until next January, so you're safe now. We finish up on March thirtieth, and, uh, just in the nick of time, goes Interstate eighty-five collapse. I guess the ground is trembling down there, we were making more laws. This issue is not new to Pickens County, it's not new to any Georgia county. One of the most hated taxes in America, in my opinion, is the abhorrent tax. Because you're being taxed to live in your home. And it feels like a lease payment, because if you quit paying your taxes, what happens? The government comes and packs you up and sells your home on the courthouse. It may take a year or two before the tax commissioner does her job, or his job, but they do it, they're required by law, it's the constitution that requires that. So that's where most of the local money is derived to fund schools and counties and cities. We all know that I'm not trying to be redundant and give you a civic lesson, but it's important to understand that all of your local services for school systems and all your local governments give most of their operating revenue from us property owners in Georgia. And that's where, that's, that's how they operate. There's not a lot of other sources. There's some sales tax revenue that helps offset that, but they don't get an income tax from the state. They do get money, the educational system here gets money from the state. In fact, sixty percent of the state budget funds education in Georgia, but it's not enough to fund all the local schools. So they levy an abhorrent tax on the real estate in that community. Senior exemptions are very important to people. Obviously, you wouldn't be here tonight. My mother and father, my dad passed away when he was seventy-two years old. He was able to get a senior exemption for about seven years of his life. He got it when he was turning sixty-five. That was over in Lunkin County where I live. And so he enjoyed that benefit for just a few years of the remaining years of his life. He was disabled from five different kinds of cancer that he had suffered through the years from. He was also a bus driver, but his main means of, of living was a poultry farm. We grew up on a poultry farm. So all we have is the land that we, we farmed all those years, and we have the chicken operation. And that's how my family survived, and that's how they were able to help me get through college and grow up, and my other two brothers. So I understand the importance of it. People on fixed incomes especially have a very hard time living in today's times. And, you know, if you take your, your power bill, your insurance, if you have a car payment, and you still have a mortgage, all the cost of groceries and so forth and so on, it adds up in a hurry. There's not a whole lot left if you're on fixed income. People living off of social security, I don't know how you do it. It's very, very difficult. So the question becomes, how do you structure an exemption? It's no different than any other exemption. You take away half the people in this room that are paying, the other half have to make up the difference. Y'all understand that. Unless the expenses are cut. So whether it's a state, the feds, or the city, or the county, or the school system, if you eliminate half of the taxpayers in that tax system, the burden is a shift to the other people that are still paying. So regardless of how you chop up the pie, the pie remains the same. The only way you're gonna change the size of that pie is if you decrease spending, or you find revenue from some other source. So we just wanna be blunt with everyone and upfront, and say, the budget is what it is. And if you can talk your school board members into cutting expenses by fifty percent and giving everybody a tax break, that would be great. But I don't think that's possible. I don't think this, you know, they haven't found a solution to doing that yet.
But if you brought people into these counties from other states that do not offer this program, would that not offset it?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
Well, you're saying you have to make it up two ways, actually there's three ways if you stop and think about it a little outside of the box. If you brought people from other states that were retiring down here, their tax money and sales via gas, food, and everything else, would probably make it up more generously than what it's presently doing.
Sure, as you continue to grow, obviously, the commercial tax base in the county, as it grows, that'll help as well. If you're growing children, though, if you're, if the population of the school, I heard that number being thrown out when I walked in. If that number continues to grow, so will the demand for more expenses.
That would be true, but if you're talking at the senior level, the majority of us people in here at this present time are not planning on having any more children than they'll be attending the school. Therefore, that would not apply, but if you brought people in from out of state that have children, but I'm talking about retirees.
I'm saying, and I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm just giving you a little background.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just gonna go through the process. So every county in. So every county in Georgia has this same scenario. If they could grow their commercial tax base, or they could bring more payers into the system, then yes, that would help. But I don't know of any county that's going out of state busing people in to do in that county.
Advertise like anybody does.
I understand, but let's, let's not get into the weeds on that. I'm going to, I'm going to go through this process, and then we'll talk about it. So if, and this is the question that you have to ask yourself. What is the perfect exemption? Is it 100% exemption for everybody under, over a certain age? Is it based on income? Is it based on the value of the home? Where do you, there's a lot of variables in this question. If you want to structure a question to go on the ballot, which is required to have a referendum in Pickens County, the question is, what does the question need to be? And that's one of the things that I talked to Mrs. Williamson about down in DeKalb earlier this year. You need to do enough grassroots work in a meeting like this. This is the start, but it's not the end. You have to reach out across the county, and you have to get a lot of different opinions. You have to hear from the school board, you have to hear from your other local officials, you have to hear from the younger people in the community that are working, that are going to be impacted by such a decision. A lot of the people I see in this room today would probably qualify for just about all of the exemptions that are offered around the state in various forms. So you need to get a lot of feedback before you decide what is the ideal situation. Everybody in here has a different need in a lot of ways. Everybody in here may have a different opinion on what they think would be fair for them and for the rest of the community. So the easiest way I felt to do that is to have a series of open meetings like the one you're having tonight. But you need your leaders in the room. I don't see all your leaders in the room. I see one school board member, two school board members. You have two school board members. So we need to start with our leadership at the state local level. You need to get in, in the community, get the business community involved, because they're going to be impacted. Their taxes are going to go up on their gas stations, their hotels, their restaurants, their pharmacies, and so forth and so on. Let's have a good, open, frank discussion, have a series of meetings, get feedback, look at what other counties around us are doing, and try to come up with what is a fair offer to the citizens of Pickens County. And then I suggest that you put that on the straw poll. That's one of the recommendations I gave Ms. Williamson, was to put it on a straw poll next year where the Republican and the Democratic primary elections are held. I think that's in May. You can have up to three questions on the ballot. And so you can have this, you can have the question on the ballot. It needs to be worded very carefully and very transparently to where people know exactly what they're voting on. What that is is basically a straw poll that gives us, as your voice in Atlanta, and your leadership here at the local level, some feedback and indication of what you want and what you don't want. Because right now, I can only tell you what I've heard so far, and that's from a small number of people that want senior exemption. Now, the word senior exemption is a very broad term. So me, as your state senator, and of course Senator Payne and Representative Jasperz, we need feedback. We need to understand what a concern or what the input of the entire community looks like, not a fraction of that community. So if we can work with y'all, and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and, and sit down and go through this process through the rest of this year, and put this question on the ballot on the straw poll next spring in the May primary, that's when the governor's election race will be, we can get some feedback from the community of Pickens County from a broader perspective. That gives us all the input that we need, and then we can go forward from there. I have done this in the past. I did it over in White County three years ago, and I sort of went through that same process as I'm talking about tonight. It passed about 70, I want to say 75 to 80%. Most people feel like any kind of tax relief is good. But what you need to understand is what the impact is. There are consequences to all of those decisions. And I think once you put those issues out in the newspaper and out across the community and put it on the ballot, people have a right to, to voice their opinion, and we can listen to the, the word of the people. How can you go wrong with that? So that's the process we went through in White County, Lunkin County, Dawson County. They've done similar pieces of legislation. There's no right or wrong answer. It's whatever fits Pickens County. And that's what you have to figure out, is what's best for Pickens County. And so I would suggest to you that we have an open and honest dialogue, and we keep the personalities and the emotions at the door, and let's talk about it from a, you know, what's realistic? What can you afford? What can the school boards afford going forward? Because I can tell you, what is done in every community I've seen, and I'm just telling you the truth, the, the increase in the village rate is significant. It raised the village rate in my hometown 20% to 25% on the, on the school budget. It also impacted the county and the city because we had a tax exemption on them as well. So that's, that's what we've been there. I've got a hand in the back, and I'll come back to you.
When you asked me that, in your experience with White County, when you just hit that, you said three years ago, did you see any incentive for keeping costs down at the school board?
No, no.
None whatsoever?
They blame me for, for the increase in the military.
Because we see never incentive here with county commissions. I was going to say, because we've never seen any incentive with this county commission to lower taxes. They've always increased ever since I was here, and they just keep going.
The incentive is the budget. The budget drives the village rate. Revenue in and revenue out equate to the village rate. That's how they levy the taxes every year. So that's a pretty basic function of government accounting, but it's, it really boils down to spending. Now, the priorities have to be set by your elected officials. I used to be a sole county commissioner. Y'all had a sole county commissioner here for many years. I've known the last two that were here. Now you have a board of three. And so you have to go to those board meetings, you have to ask questions. The same with your school board members. They're accountable to all of us too. And they set their budgets, and then they pass that village rate over to the county, and the county levies that rate on to all of you as taxpayers. So the budget's going to go up and down, revenues are going to go up and down. So let's just call it what it is. I mean, it is, it is a shift of the burden. If everybody in this room tomorrow no longer has to pay the school tax, there's going to be a dollar impact to this person's and this board's budget. So we got to make up that difference. Either you cut spending, or you raise that village rate, or you bring in more people, you bring in more business, and you grow your digest.
Or you have property reassessed.
Ma'am?
Or you have property reassessed.
Let's hope you don't have to reassess your property. That's not a good... Yes, sir. I'll come back to you in the back.
There was a question I wanted to get to, which was, you said there are other counties that have done this. And so there is already a practical experience of the historical outcome of where in one county, they blame you.
Right.
Because they got what they wanted, and then they found out that's really not what they wanted at the end.
Let me tell you, the citizens didn't blame me. They were grateful that they got the relief. But the school board said, well, we got to raise the military this year to cause the senior exemption went into effect.
So which county? Of the counties that have the senior exemption, which one could we try to model after? Which one has had the, the best of the outcomes and the pros and cons?
Well, I think it depends on your perspective, where you sit sometimes is where you stand. Have you ever heard that saying?
Sure. That's why I said, shut it up.
If you, if you're in a position to gain, and when I say gain, I mean benefit from a 100% exemption on a million dollar house, then you want the Cadillac plan, somewhat, sort of like a health insurance plan, you know? Now, some of these counties have less desirable plans. Some of them have an exemption for people that are making an income of less than $25,000 a year, which I think you already have. So if you're making less than $25,000 a year, you, today, you get an exemption on your school tax. I'm not sure, is that 100%? So I don't know if any of y'all would qualify for that. You may not even know that. Now, in White County, for example, we put an income qualifier on it, but we did not include passive income. So we didn't include the social security and retirement income. So we did it for people that are actively out working, that are, maybe they have a, they own a restaurant, or they own a hotel, or they have an active business where they get up every morning to go to work. If they're making $200,000 a year, you know, we, the people in White County felt like they should continue to pay. But the people who were sitting at home that were either disabled or on a fixed income, like a social security check or a small pension, they were exempt because their income was less than that dollar amount.
Well, we know that a lot of people who are getting older have accumulated money, and if you're in fixed income investments, you've been crushed because you can't get any return on your money in a certificate, a deposit, or any kind of a safe investment. So I think that that's driving a lot of the angst with people who are living on fixed income. We're not making any money on the money we've accumulated.
You could have $100 million in the bank, and that wouldn't, wouldn't matter. You know what I'm saying? Because it is fixed. The, the income issue was based on your tax return of the previous year. So you would take it down to the tax assessor's office. You would show them your, your top two pages of your tax return, which today is a bad day to be talking about taxes. But you would show them, would qualify based on that investment, so it didn't matter how much money you have accumulated in wealth in the bank or assets. It would all be based on what you accumulated last year in income that's taxable under your, I guess it would be your adjusted gross income.
Most of the things you brought up, we have already discussed. We got here. Back to the original question of...
The process goes some, once we decide, once we, the community decides what we think we want, because whatever you put forward is going to pass. I can almost assure you, it's going to pass. So be careful what you ask for, because you're probably going to get it. So get, figure out what it is we want, this thing to look like. And once we figure that out, we ask our state representative to introduce it in the House. Most of the time, those revenue bills have to originate in the House. It is special local legislation. It has to be advertised in the newspaper, just like any other local legislation would. It would go through the House in just about three, four weeks. It would go to the Senate, and then within three, four weeks, it would come out of the Senate. By the end of the session, it should be on the governor's desk and signature. Now, that would go into effect the following January. Typically, you, you can't do it in that current year because the tax base, the tax digest has already been approved, the tax village rates have already been levied. So the following year, on January 1, you, the citizen, would have to go into the tax assessor's office and sign up for this special tax exemption. And then in that following year, in your next tax bill, it would, the savings would be reflected, whether that's 50%, 100%, whatever we come up with. So it's a pretty simple process. It's not complicated. But the impact on it is long-term. It's, it's hard to undo something once you do it. It's not impossible, but politically, it's hard to take something back. Try taking away social security now. That would, that would be an example. It's hard to take it away. Yes, ma'am?
So is that two and a half years from the inception of the straw poll?
If you pass the bill, if you, if you, if the referendum comes back next year in the affirmative, then it would go to the legislature the following January, and then the legislation would be advertised in the local paper. It would go through the Senate and the House that same session, and to the governor's desk, and it would become law basically when he signs it, or no later than July 1st. And then that following January is when it would go into effect. You would sign up by January, and then it would be that following tax year when you would get your first tax relief.
We have straw poll next spring. We could get it on the 2018 ballot?
You need to try to get it on the 2018 ballot. Otherwise, it's 2020 because there's not another election. And we don't normally do things like this in a special election because there's a pretty big cost to the taxpayer to call for a special election. That should only be done, in my opinion, in the case of a death or vacancy of a office. We shouldn't have special elections for any election. Not unless it's to fill the vacancy.
So if we have straw poll next spring in May, everybody chooses a tax plan, you give it to y'all, and you put it, and it gets on the ballot in 2018?
Well, I'm trying to think if there's any, if there's an election before that. I'm not aware of anything this year. You have city elections in, or it's just beginning to splash up on the shores here. It's just a matter of time. But some of y'all don't want that growth up here. You want the convenience, but not the people in the road in front of you. That's where the tax, the tax stuff. You're welcome. But Dawson County, Dawson County does have a school exemption now, but it's for people I have agreed on for over 75. That number may be incorrect, but you may...
No, it's 70 you get the total exemption if you got less than five acres. But it's a percentage of 65.
Okay. So your, your question earlier about 10 acres came up. Most of you probably know this, but if you own 10 acres or more, you can sign your land into what's called COBRA, Conservation Use Valuations Program. It's basically freezes the development rights on that land for 10 years. And you sign up covenant, and at the day of the wood of the county, that you won't develop that acreage for those 10 years. And you can breach that because of penalties on the offer of that program. So that eliminates about 90% of taxes on that land. Most farmers use it, it's very adequate, it's a very good tool, it's a great resource for them. If you have timber, if you have grass, just about any kind of agricultural use, you can use that on, on your 10 acres or more. There's actually a provision, I believe in the law, if you have less than 10 acres, you can sign it up too. But I think you have a forestry plan that's approved by Georgia Forestry. I'm not going to get into weeds on that either, but go by your tax assessor's office.
This is awesome. I said 70, but it's 75.
75, well, I'm right, man. 75 years of age.
Up to five acres.
Up to five acres, 100% school exemption. So 75 is pretty, it's pretty high up there. I mean, a lot of people are living longer than that now, but... I'm, I'm just turned 50, and I'm looking forward to the day I get some compensation myself. I'm paying extra until I get there, but I'm willing to work.
You don't live in this county?
No, sir, I don't.
I'm looking forward to the event.
I have a time, but I don't, I'm probably getting lower income by the time I get out of here. I don't have any retirement. I don't have all those pension plans yet. Anyway, let me get back to some questions. I'm going, I'm going to run out of time. In the back. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. I'm going to tell you a little personal.
Um, if you could speak...
I'll tell you. I'll tell you a little personal experience. I was in, I was in Home Depot the other day, picking up something for my house. There was a lady there, I don't know, maybe 40-ish, and she was opening up a place in a, a built, a, a business in Ball Ground, which is, seems to be getting going pretty good. So I asked her, I says, excuse me, ma'am, I mean, I'm not personally butt into your business, but why don't you open up here? And the first thing she said was, the taxes are too high. And I said, I agree with you, ma'am. Thank you very much. And I kind of walked away. And the Home Depot guy just kind of looked at me like, you've taken away our business, you know? But that's the first thing she said. I won't build here, or I will not open my business because my taxes are going to be too high in Pickens County. Period. End of story. So that's all, that's, that was a true story. It happened about, I don't know, maybe a month ago. And I just said to her, and I says, you got the cat, or the dog chasing his own tail. Your taxes are too high, people aren't going to come here. And if you reduce the taxes on some people, they've got to go somewhere else. But you're right. You know, it has to come from somewhere. But you've got to, I mean, I was thinking about moving to Blair's Grove. And I went up there, and I said, geez, what a mess. That thing is like a metropolis of mess. So don't want to go there. But Elgin, Lurid, they got the tax situations up there for us. But Pickens stinks. End of story.
So my, my favorite work was done on May 15th of 2014. The village rate in Pickens County at that time was lower than Dawson County. That was three years ago. I don't know what it is today, so...
It's 23.93.
Is that total or?
Total.
So 17.7. So it's, it's a little lower actually than it was in 2014. Is that what you're saying?
No, it's, it went up.
Yeah, we dropped down. 16, 15. So I'm not going to argue whether your taxes are too high or spending is out of hand. That's your local government that has to make that decision. Y'all have a board of commissioners that makes all the decisions, but... You know, get involved. I would say to you, get involved. But here's the other thing, buy local. Make sure that Home Depot you're buying at is in Pickens County. You want to keep that dollar here. Because the folks in Dawson County, they love it when you come over there. And when my people in Lunkin County go to Dawson County, and I'm guilty of it too, I'm taking that money to Dawson County. We don't have all the services in Lunkin that we want either, so we're all sort of fighting for that, that dollar. We always want to get that money local. If you can buy local, do so. It's very important for these fellows up here. They have to balance that budget. Yes, sir?
I mean, you're a little younger than a couple of people here, but I bought my first real estate when I was 20 years old.[1799.44] I'm now almost 71. I put two kids into public education. When is the bill over? When am I done paying for that? I mean, it's like there's no end to this.
Unfortunately, when they tear you out of the call. Under the current system.
Well, for that time, I think I wanna put a fight...
I'm with you. Now, that was it earlier. That's the most shitty tax in the country, my opinion. Quit paying the tax on the community. That doesn't seem American to me. And we've gotta find a better way to, to fund our, our children's education. It's important. It's one of the most important things to do. If we don't educate these kids and get them into technical colleges that are like here, or in college, get them a good job. You know where they're gonna end up? They're gonna end up in the state prison system. You know how much it costs to hold a prisoner a year? About three times more than we spend to educate them. So, it's a lot cheaper and a better investment to educate them early than it is to hold them in a prison. So, we've got to keep our education to the best it can be. And I think the local guys are doing a great job with that. Question them all you want. They're here, they're a caliber to you, and I admire them for being here. But we gotta work together. This thing is, can be worked out, but we've got to all work together.
I just had a quick question. When Lee was talking about getting 4,040 signatures on petition, is that anything that will escalate the...
That's very significant.
Getting on the ballot and...
We, we did that in White County. I asked, you know, I asked, there was a group of, I think they were all ladies, people like Lee, that took the, sort of the step out and, and leaped forward and said, we gotta do something. They got engaged. I started meeting with them, and they got out in the community and got petitions signed. We got over 2,000 petitions that were signed by the voters.
And they'll do it for voting on the ballot?
It's hard to, it's hard to turn your back on that kind of outpour of support. But I think they, again, the key is to have a good discussion around the community. Put it on that ballot. Get that question out there, and let people, everybody have a voice and a vote in it. And it's, it's hard to, it's hard to ignore that. I don't know how anybody could do that.
Now, the law says 20% of the voters, and that makes us a ballot. We gotta have 4,046 here. Now, do we have to have that meeting, or can we use half of it?
I don't, I don't know that you have to have a minimum number when you're working with your legislators and your local elected officials, trying to build consensus. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a magic number. I'm looking for consensus. What does a community want? And if, I think the straw poll is the way to do it. I think everybody in here says, I want some, but I don't know if everybody in here is, is gathered around one specific number. And that's what we've got to come to. You can't have six different values on the, on your, on the ultimate rest, referendum. You've gotta have one particular proposal to put forward, and that's what we've got to come up with. Does that make sense? Yes, sir?
If you're 75 or older, your children are out of school, your grandchildren are out of school. Two generations is a nut.
Once you decide what it is that you, that you wanna push for, people will find that this will pass. I don't know of any community that has a pass that wants this to be put forward and explained. You gotta keep it simple. You gotta be able to explain it. But you also need to understand what the impact is. I'm, I'm gonna stress this, I'm gonna stress this to you. You've got to know what the impact is for these guys up here. There is, there is gonna be an, an impact, and they're gonna have to take the hit for it. So, you just need to know that going into it.
But other counties recovered.
They all, they all do. I mean, just, I don't know if all counties have an exemption, but a lot of counties do. Probably, I would bet, 3/4 of the counties in North Georgia have some.
That's gonna be my question. How many counties in Georgia do not have a senior exemption?
You can go on the Georgia Department of Revenue website and go under Property Taxes. There's a, there's a link for property taxes, and go down that link, and you'll find those counties listed alphabetically, that you can go and look at all of the exemptions. So, I don't know if there's a table. There probably is a table of all of them. I haven't found it yet. But I haven't spent a lot of time looking. But we can get that information to you as well. That would be good information to start gathering. Some of your data, some of your facts you need to get. What is your, what is your potential impact gonna be? What people could potentially be impacted? You can get that from the census information as well. Over in Lumpen County, we've had over 2,000 parcels of land already that have signed up for the exemption. And so, that's about a $3 million hit to the local school boards like that. And so, we know what data is out there, and it can help you make better decisions.
Yeah, earlier in this conversation, somebody brought up that this county doesn't receive, like, state funding for the school because of some designation that we have. How can that get changed so that this county...
Every system in Georgia, yes, has per DMR.
We're tier four, we can't...
But the tier four situation here is different. For Grant's and Co. in D.C. and the students, the students may per students, per full-time student. I mean, when your numbers go in, they have to spend, basically, their enrollment to the state board education. They get the money from the state based on the full-time equipment of those children that are enrolling in Pickens County schools. Every county in Georgia gets that. I'm not aware of any public school system that does not get federal enforcement. And these folks are gonna give you that data.
I've got one question there. Do you have any clue how much of the budget, school budget, up in rise for people with 65 and 60?
They can, the tax assessor's office can give you that. It's a solid data tax digest that's printed every year. I believe they can tell you how many people live in Pickens County over a certain age. They can cross-reference to the census data. And we've known some, did some, we did some of that preliminary research.
That would give you an idea of how much you were affected.
Yeah. And it's, it's increasing. Baby boomers were growing over. People were moving out of the land, coming up here to the mountains. Those are awesome quality of life that we have. And so, we're seeing millennials moving toward the cities, and the retirees moving out of the city. That's a trend we're seeing all over the state. Sure. Yes, sir?
I don't know much about taxes, but what about sales taxes? Any of that go towards...
Yes, sir. The, you have 7% sales tax in Pickens County, I believe. 4% of the 7% goes to the state, and the other 3% stay here in Pickens County. 1% is your he-loss. 1% is what's called loss. That's a local option, sales tax. And then you have a special purpose local option, sales tax. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Y'all still have just a 1%. There's been some talk in the past about increasing that to offer some tax relief to everybody in home state. So, let's say, and I'm, I'm trying to run some numbers. I don't know what the number would be. You increase sales tax to 8 or 9% from the 7% that you currently have, how much could be low for everybody's home state, or their outdoor tax on their home? I'd love to see us wipe everybody's tax bill out, at least on the homes that they live in on a permanent basis. If you have rental property or income properties, that may be a little different. But if you have a home state that you live in here full-time, let's get rid of the taxes on it, you know, altogether. So, that's kind of the policy I'd like to see us go according to. Not on here, not on the state. That would require constitutional amendment, I believe.
To piggyback on what you just asked, it seems like to me that Pickens County government has had a cash cow with all of these retirees and the money that they have. They don't wanna change it, and they don't want 515 to grow. They don't, they wanna keep the industry out. They wanna keep 515 pristine. So, as a result, it falls on us. If we make that change so that the seniors don't pay the school tax, they can easily make up a lot of it. It'll just build up 515 and take the money from the sales tax.
Do you have a, do you have a guy here in Pickens County that runs the chamber who's also over economic development, right? Jerry?
Yeah.
Take it down.
Take it down.
Okay. So, Denise left a year or so ago. But anyway, their focus is economic development. They're trying to get insurance here. They're trying to get business, commercial development, and all that. But if you do that, you're doing it for the tax revenue, and that goes all of us.
A lot of people keep signing up, and they deal with laws too, and they go away. It's like the fight.
It's not easy. It's very competitive in market, because every time a prospect comes to Georgia, there's 159 counties that wanna go get that prospect. You know, we'd love to have one over in Dawson County. We'd like to have one over in White County. We'd like to have one in Full County. Everybody wants that prospect. So, those reasons, it boils down to the bottom line is, private business has to decide where they wanna be, where they wanna put their money, and produce the jobs. And so, the county wants to keep a very healthy environment, tax laws as well. So, you gotta keep your taxes level over to recruit that industry as well. It's not an easy task.
I don't, I don't think we've done very good at bringing people in.
It's, we have the same problem in my community where I live. It's not easy in these mountain areas because of the terrain. Land values are higher. There's a lot of, down in South Georgia, land's cheap. A place down there, you can get land for $500 an acre. I don't know where you're buying it or laying three gallons for that. So, businesses look at all of that. They look at taxes, they look at land values that are hostile, or your closest hospital. If you're lucky, you have Pitymont here, Jasper. So, you have a beautiful community. You've just gotta work together. Word of the commission, the school board members, I think they're there. They have good intentions. They got to do what they said can. They're not getting paid a lot of money for part-time. I don't even know if y'all's getting paid or not. $100.
Coming on your media. He's getting regular, you're not getting paid.
I don't get paid. Just not...
No, you don't. Okay.
And here's the best part. Sign up and run for office. People are not leaving. Somebody get rewarded by the payment. It doesn't get rare. Wonderful.
Rewards are in the channel.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a... I'm gonna, I'm gonna close it out here in a second, though.
Lee, what do you wanna do now? What do you want us to do now?
This is your, this is your effort. You've got a good leader up here, so you don't have to give you marching orders. But I'm here as your voice in the land. I can work with Ray Jasper's and Chuck Fane, who's just been elected. He's from Dawson area. And so, we'll work, and we'll stay in touch with you all. We're gonna work with the school board as well. The county commissioners really aren't impacted by this a whole lot, because this is only dealing with the school board exemptions, what I understand that you all are looking at. So, yeah, we'll continue to work with them. But we really wanna know what the fiscal impact of this is gonna be, to make sure the citizens are aware of what we're walking into. So, I'm here to help any way I can. We can get information to you, for you, from you, whatever, working through the school, and the local tax assessor board, the department of revenue. We can get a lot of that information if you can't get it. So, you just have to reach out to us through Lee or whomever, and we'll be happy to work with you. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. I'd like to.
Thank you for...
You're here tonight along with the two school board members. A lot of our local officials evidently don't care that much for us. Mr. Jasper has a lot of power, evidently. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he got it passed. He's okay to carry it down to church, but he's not here for us as citizens. And if I'm understanding correctly, our school bill for a senior, about 76%, 75 or 76% of the school tax bill is for school taxes.
That's not uncommon.
It's about, it's about 65% we're out there on going.
67, based on the military.
It's around 60, 70%.
It's about, sit right now, and based on the county military rate or school military rate, the county rate's up, the schools went down, so it shifted a little bit. It's about 67% school and the rest county. But based on military rates, it bounces back and forth in that range.
That's, that's pretty well in line with the local counties, at least up here. County used to have the lowest military rate in the state, in Towns County, here beside the sides. I'm not sure where their rates are today. Yes, ma'am?
Do we have any idea how many children their parents are property owners?
No, I couldn't tell you that. I'm not sure if that's in the mode of, of, possibly privacy information. I can tell you this, there's a lot of children in property in this community in all over North Georgia. 65, 75% of the kids in my hometown are on free or reduced. Why don't you just what's the number here?
It's 54% here overall, but some of those elementary schools are like 62, you know, 60. It skews when you get into high school, looking at this. A lot of kids don't, they will take advantage of it in high school. They're embarrassed by it.
Yeah, that's right.
So, that skews a little bit.
Can I ask Mr. Bell how we go over a fewer than, and what his salary will be?
I'm gonna let you talk. I'll tell you this, whatever they make, it's not enough. I wouldn't be a teacher for $200,000 a year. They have a tough job. I was a bad student. I've had as few women as I've deserved. I'm gonna sit down now, and I've got to leave here before we can go back to Dawson County for another meeting. And let me just say, I'm here to help you as much as we can. We've got to communicate, work together. I appreciate the opportunity to be your voice in Atlanta and serve as your senator. If I can help you any way, let me know. Thank you.
Somebody asked me in the back office my next step. I'm leaving. I'm gonna be presenting these tax plans to commissioners, and the school board's already got a call, so they can talk about it. Whatever they need to do. But I will be going over these with commissioners at my next step. And I'll give the coffee of the straw poll questions to Senator, and he can tell me whatever worry about.
I'm not a lawyer. We'll have to let the, you know, the lawyers figure that out. But the, the, the straw poll question can basi-